All right, welcome to council work session 222nd, 6:00 PM Town Hall Complex. Thank you everyone for coming. At this time, I would ask if Ms. Hartley would say your name again?
Father, we thank you for this time from the city. We thank you as you said in your words that we are prepared to pray for those who are in authority. As we come together tonight, we thank you for your divine intervention. Lead us forward to your plan for your people here as in the name of Jesus Christ, good and bad.
Amen. Thank you. And at this time, I am bringing the attendance of the budget, please led by Mr. Gambero.
Listen, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands
You want it first?
Yes.
Your first.
Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, and Council, oh, I guess, it has come to our attention that Council has not received all of the information available to the Council regarding the water project. And there was, there's some new information, well, it's really not new, but some information that was available to staff one year ago, at least one year ago. And at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Fel to come forward to present that information from the city before we go. So, Mr. Fel, if you don't mind coming up. And this is information that potentially will save the town some $25 million and why it was not worth the council, I'm not quite sure. But I would like for Council to hear this alternative information, this sort of sense of, to hear this alternative information that may give Council a little bit better understanding of the options for the water project as opposed to just the one option that they are, you know, elected to council. So without any further ado, I would like to turn my time over to Mr. Fel.
Mr. Fel, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Yeah.
So that everyone knows who you are?
There you go. I'm Jason Fel with Saluda County Water and Sewer Authority. I'm the general manager, been there for almost eight years. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Listen, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and just at least present what we had offered to y'all. It's in the spirit of humility that I'm here just to try to express what we had offered a year ago. In just it, in general, the offer that we had presented to Hazen-Sawyer, and I've left copies of an executive summary and an email that I made to Hazen and Sawyer detailing the offer. We had offered finished wholesale water on a cost-to-serve approach for $1.98 per gallon. The wholesale cost include O&M, debt service administrative appreciation, and a 10% margin. We offered 2 million gallons a day of capacity in our distribution system for 2.6 million. Now, that's the distribution capacity, one eight and a half miles from our water treatment plant off of Shealy Road, all the way through the county line on 391. That would be the primary interconnection we offered. We also offered two additional interconnections. One at the county line on Highway 378, three miles from our water treatment plant. And also on the county line on Rockin Creek Road in the Acapulco community, four miles from the plant, that's an additional cost. Some background. It is SEWSA's mission to provide access to everyone in the western Midlands region for good clean water. In the first year of operations, we have been a success. It's been a win for us comparatively where we were purchasing water, now make water and produce it for less than we had purchased it. We want to extend this opportunity to the rest of the western Midlands region. It is obviously a resource that is finite and we would love to be able to provide water to Batesburg, to Ridge Fring, to Saluda CPW, and to Gilbert Summit. The business concept is really to scale. The more we, water we sell, the less the cost to produce on a per-unit basis with fixed cost holding constant. Some of the benefits of purchasing water from SEWSA. Excellent raw water quality. The intake is located at the bottom of the submerged Saluda River that provides constant slow velocity with lower turbidity levels. While SEWSA has taken steps to mitigate, fortunately, SEWSA has not experienced taste and odor issues to date. Excellent finished water quality. SEWSA won the 2019 SEC Best Tasting Water two months after we were in operation. The new water treatment plant has improved all aspects of water quality, less corrosive, lower turbidity, lower TTHM, and adequate chlorine residuals throughout SEWSA's distribution system that extends over 25 miles from the water treatment plant. Proximity to SEWSA's water treatment plant. Batesburg-Leesville is only 12 and a half miles from SEWSA's water treatment plant. It's even closer on the northern part of Batesburg-Leesville service territory. Service territory development. With this proposal, Batesburg-Leesville can address future growth on Highway number one and Lake Merton. Shared cost in distribution capacity. The premise for the proposal that we made to provide water up to 2 million gallons a day, eight and a half miles from the county line to, from our plant, was on a shared cost basis of the percentage of flow in that pipe. We're sharing the cost, doing two things, and serving our community and your community with one pipe. These are both, on both ends shovel-ready projects. SEWSA's project is ready to be bid within 90 days with water lines for all three Batesburg-Leesville interconnections proposed. We call it our Phase Two project. I am aware Batesburg-Leesville already has engineering design in Lexington County on Highway 391 and on Highway 378. You already have design that's been done beforehand. Accountability. SEWSA standard for providing water quality is not just at the county line, but also at the last tap. We know firsthand the pains of having violations for TTHM and not having the ability to take care of it. We would be accountable to making sure and ensuring, not just at the point of delivery at the county line, but throughout Batesburg-Leesville, every single tap, that we're giving you the best water quality we possibly can.
And those violations are the ones of Ridge Fring?
They're not toward, out towards Ridge Fring. And that violations thankfully have been, we're in compliance now. Accountability. A SEWSA standard for providing quality water is not just at the, I said that one, sorry. SEWSA is also willing to provide assistance at St. Louis, to that end. We've been there, we've been going through the process of sampling TTHM. We've learned a lot through the past year or years. We'd be happy to pass that along and make sure that you're successful in those ventures too. And finally, as our second largest customer, SEWSA will be accountable and willing to help, whatever time and place. If it's 3:00 in the morning, we will be there to help and assist. Transparency. SEWSA is open to holding an annual meeting to present financial data, discuss water quality status, and answer questions. Again, we've got nothing to hide. We want to try to benefit everybody. We will be accountable on how we arrive at numbers and showing how good or whatever problems we have with our water. We've been doing great thus far. Excess capacity for future growth. Currently, we're permitted to treat 4 million gallons a day. With the new impending project, we're going to be increased to 6 million gallons a day by increasing the size of two of the pumps. The water treatment plant site itself is plumb to, for future expansion as needed, to anywhere between 12, 15 million gallons a day. I can go on for more things, but frankly, the offer that we presented, I've got, I've done a lot of homework, I can answer questions.
How does this differ from what's in the study?
There's discrepancies on that.
If you would, go through that, please.
Just on one point, we have the cost for capital construction for three different segments. We're estimated in the Hazen and Sawyer report to be $14,195,000. The difference on Sections 1 and 2, the Hazen estimate had it at 4.963 million, and again, we proposed to offer 2.6 million to the county line.
So there's a $12 million difference, and how is that, sir?
No, no, not just yet. That's just to the county line for Sections 1 and 2.
Okay.
So the difference there between the two, to get it to the county line, was 2.363 million dollars. On Section 3, that would-
What is that difference, sir? How is it, how, what is the difference? Is it pipe size? Is it man hours? Is it pumps? Is it, what's the difference, sir?
The estimation between Hazen and Sawyer and what we offer. It was a discrepancy. I offered in my proposal 2.6 million. They looked at-
Is it cheaper, is it cheaper infrastructure? Is it cheaper labor? Is it a different route?
Is it different?
I'm trying to understand what the difference is.
Our valuation is different than what Hazen and Sawyer has.
In what way, sir? I don't understand.
Hazen and Sawyer valued the pipe per linear feet-
Okay.
At $200 per linear foot.
Okay.
We have had bids that came in within the last year or two and developed projects on a similar pipe for $95 per linear foot.
Okay.
Twice as much as what they're estimating in some other costs.
Thank you, sir.
That's fine. And I'll provide this, well, this is another quick summary of sections for tables, 6-1, 6-2, and 6-3. In Section 3, the water line construction proposed by Hazen and Sawyer consisted of $9.23 million. It is my estimate that that can be done for much less. And this is my estimate, and Hazen and Sawyer has their estimate, they're both not wrong. They're just two different opinions.
Are they opinions, or are these actually differences?
Well, they're opinions until you actually build the project.
Well, there would be, this is math and numbers and calculating, right?
Well, then, I'm going to describe the differences in y'all, and I have notes at the bottom as well to try to elaborate on where my concerns may differ from where Hazen and Sawyer and how we value them differently.
Great.
Okay. On the water line construction for Segment 3, in my estimation, based off of the linear foot, they had estimated from the county line to town on West Church Street that it was 3.7 miles. It's actually 3.1 miles. And so there's a slight bit of savings there as well. That's just oversight or something. Or they may have, I think, looked at Jeremiah Road as the point of delivery, not the county line. Understandable. It again has a cost estimate for running it back into town at over $200 per linear foot. Again, I feel comfortable saying $95 to $100 per linear foot is well within the reason to try to construct this pipe from the county line into town. That difference then for the Hazen estimate on water line construction is 3.858 million. We're my estimate, using round numbers, 1.5. Meter stations, they have a quarter of a million dollars placed in for a meter station. That's included into the price of the 2.6 million that we're offering. A 1 million gallon ground storage tank, $1,550,000. I've estimated it to be at most 750,000. Now, I say that out of experience at our existing water treatment plant, we did it for less than that for two and a half million gallons. Clear weather support ground storage. Booster pump station, $1.25 million. SEWSA estimate, $750,000. Now, I could be wrong, this is my experience, but we have bids, or we have a contractor with an estimate to put in a similar pump station that will provide up to 2 million gallons a day service off of Highway 39 for $750,000 and was willing to put it in in six months' time. We have a cost estimate to do a temporary one that you could make permanent for lower than that. Existing water treatment plant fee commissioning, $200,000. I don't know what the scope of the work is, so I put $200,000. Engineering surveying permitting, they have $691,000. I have probably erred too low. I have $100,000 in there, but that is under the assumption that you can reuse and administer contracts with the existing design that has been done out on 378 and on 391 in Lexington County. New Eastman's property acquisition, $52,000. I'm going to agree, that seems reasonable. Contingency, 1.381 million. That's based off of 20% of the total project cost. Typically, I see with rural development contingencies start at 10%, and then they go to 5% once you go to bid. I had a much lower number of $320,000. My number for total estimate for Section number 3 is somewhere in the range of $3.672 million. Their estimate was for $9.232 million, a difference of $5,560,000. The total difference that I see in all three sections is $7,923,000. I will say this as well, when I see here perplexed and bewildered, Lance, I understand you, I do too.
Did you work, you worked with consultants when they came?
Yes.
And then you saw the final study, right?
I'm sorry?
They came back to you, did you guys go back and forth?
I never seen this, the study until a week ago. I've never been given that study until a week ago. So, it is my understanding that the elevation difference between at the county line and in town is about 100 feet. This is in area terms, but that's about 43, 45 PSI difference. At my water treatment plant, we have a very high pressure coming out of the plant. We will, and we're looking to tier our, our distribution system into different pressure zones. We already have in this Phase 2 project, a booster pump station that we are going to have to put in regardless upon 391, somewhere on Summerland Highway. It is my understanding, I could probably pump it, deliver at the adequate pressure without having to have a booster pump station of your own, and be happy to do that, so it's part of what, doing more with less. My grandmother always said, waste not, want not. Use your resources wisely, and that's the way I look at what we're trying to do here, is to try to work together as a community in this western Midlands and to be able to provide the people of this town water at a reasonable price.
So you're saying this proposal was introduced to Batesburg a year ago?
To Hazen and Sawyer, your engineer, for July 3rd.
Can that also, Mr. Fel?
All right, so, what we're looking at going to joint water is a $30 million water pipe to get to Oxway Road. And then, we saw that today, it's some type of formula. They will, it's nothing in writing, but it's some type of formula that we can buy water for $1.69 after we spend the $30 billion, but there's no guarantee that $1.69 is not guaranteed. Is that right, Ted?
My understanding is, if anything, the price could be as low as $1.50, but $1.66 was young.
Do you have that in writing?
Yes.
And is this guaranteed in writing?
It's in writing as part of the study.
I'm saying it's guaranteed in writing, because you're talking about building a 30-
Let me ask this-
Hold on, wait, wait.
Well, I would ask, Mr. Fel, can you guarantee $1.98 in four years?
So will you finish my question first, though? All right, so you're talking about in four years, that price is not going to change?
I can't say for sure for long. But that $1.98 can change as well in four years.
And to be fair, if that is correct.
Yeah, so, we can't lock in a price today for something that's going to be four years.
Yeah, but this- Mr. Fel, over the next three years, yours is going to go up a percentage each year. What is that percentage, sir?
I want to know if the people's water bill is going to go up with your plan. I, that's all I want to know, just to be truthful.
Wait, God, is that what he's talking, he's talking to Ted?
I'm talking to Ted.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I can't answer for what anybody's water bill, what either plan's going to do in-
You should know already.
Well, Mr. Fel has, Mr. Fel is here from Saluda County.
I'm asking a question, Lance, but I am going to ask my question.
The man is standing right here in front of us from Saluda County, and he would be able to tell us whether or not the water rates will go up.
Just ask him the question too.
Is there a guarantee that the people's water bill will not go up? And I'm tired of you interrupting me while I'm asking a question.
Go ahead, please, answer your question.
Babe, question, I need an answer. Answer me. Is the people's water bill going to go up with your plan?
I can't answer that with any certainty. And that's for either direction that we go, for any of the projects.
The difference, though, Ted, is to get to joint water, it is a $30 million endeavor, right?
Well, 24, 30, amortized over 40 years.
Right, so $30 million to get to joint water, and then we'll see what the water price is going to be, right?
So-
Wait, is that correct? $30 million to get there?
Now, $24 million to get there.
Okay, and then with the, with the-
Well, actually, that includes $5 million for capacity purchase. So it's not all infrastructure.
And then we'll, the payback, $30 million project worth, right?
Right.
Just to get-
Over 40 years.
To get there, right? Okay, so-
So, what is the, what is the amortize cost then?
Wait, 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 wait.
For what Mr. Fel said today, over 40 years.
Ted, I got it.
Yeah, what is that, Mr. Fel?
Yeah, what is that? So, I use the Hazen and Sawyer study. It's a good study, it's very thorough, very thoughtful. I conservatively estimate our, the total improvements that Batesburg-Leesville would have to go into debt would be $6.272 million. And so, and based off of the report, it said for the joint that they would pay $5 million of the $24 million, but that the $5 million would be paid from Batesburg for the capacity cost in their system. So, total amount is about $24 million or so. So my amortization cost on an annual basis, not just including debt, but for, if you're using rural development, you need to consider the 10% debt reserve. The two of those together for SEWSA is, SEWSA's alternative is $241,279.45. With the option that's on the table from the joint, for the $24 million, 19 for the debt, and then $5 million for the capacity, it is $937,496.85. What I'm saying is, we're running, you're responsible for O&M for three miles, not 14. And the O&M, in my opinion, could be less than what's put into the report. I kept it relatively the same. Yes, my number for cost to sell is a little bit higher. It's $1.98, but I'm including cost of, that's not put there in capacity that you're having already. When you look at the capacity plus their rate, it's more than equivalent. And in my estimation, over the 30-year projection that's in there with the proposal that I'm putting forward or suggesting, it could save Batesburg-Leesville $557,000 and change a year.
Mr. Fel, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
In yours, does that include the 100% that we will have to pay to get from the county line back into town?
Yeah, as part of the Section 3 that we're talking about. They said it, it could be, if you have, the business is you have the plan in 391 place.
So, let's say again, the question for council, for council is, do we want to, first of all, I'm disappointed that we just now get this information. And secondly, this seems like a viable alternative that will save money, because the joint water, again, we don't know what their number, what their number is going to be as far as the actual cost of the water in four years after we spend the $30 million of the pipe we're going to get there. So, this still seems like it's just a viable deal, and it's going to save the taxpayer and the water customers a ton of money.
What was the, what was joint's initial offer without the buy-in for $1,000? $2?
No, $1.67.
Without the buy-
$1.66.
Without the buy-in?
What do you mean without the buy-in?
They proposed-
Their rate is $1,000.
They proposed a rate reduction based on the buy-in. $5 million got us a rate reduction. What was the original?
The rate, there was no rate reduction for buy-in in there. The price was $1.67.
$1.66. That wasn't what you told us in the beginning.
The original offer was $2.
It wasn't $1.67.
That was exactly in the question.
That was not what you said in the beginning.
Okay. All right. I got to ask. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to arrive at the fact that $5 million amortized turns out to be about $6.6 million, roughly $6.6 million. So if we don't do the buy-in, what is the price going to be from going? Can we take that, can we take that $6 million and run a line down number one, and run a line down 378, and greatly enhance our revenues, which is going to save our taxpayers and water people money? So what, what does joint say the original number was without a buy-in? If I, if we ask you for a $5 million, says we'll do a $5 million buy-in, what happens to your $1.60? Your $1.98? How much? Do you have an idea?
I don't have it right off the top.
Get back to council for that for us, please. Either through Mr. Scholl or-
Right, but that's an important question, though, because, Nathan, you sit on the board. What is, what is the answer to that question?
Well, there's no, there's no answer to that question yet. The board, the board hasn't made a vote on this yet. This is still in early negotiations. They haven't, they haven't made a vote on anything yet as far as the project.
So why don't you want to, Mr. Counsel, and this is-
No, no, we've committed to negotiating a contract, and we have a DI consent order, so we have those two votes, those two things that happen, okay? So, and I'm, Mr. Fel, thank you for coming in here for sharing. And I think, and I think that the-
I'm going to go with him, yeah, no worries.
In, in the, in fairness, you know, joint municipal should get to come and do the same thing that you're going to do tonight, because you, you've looked at this, because you've looked at the study, and you've decided that the study is not what you had thought. You thought it could be cheaper, so joint municipal should have the opportunity to do the same thing.
Wait, wait. Now, what you're saying-
Yeah, what?
What you're saying, hold on a second.
Jason, do you feel like they shouldn't get to come here and present to this council?
Wait, one second.
Mr. Kane, sure?
Because what you're saying is not fundamentally true. This, wait, the fact that this proposal was in the town hall one year ago. This man did not see that report until last week, so.
I understand that, I understand, I understand your, but, the report didn't come out a year ago.
No, his, his offer to, his offer to the town was in the town hall one year ago.
Okay.
And council did not receive that.
Okay, how did that offer not make it into the study? Mr. Phil?
That's the honest question.
No, I'm asking Mr. Phil, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm asking Mr. Phil, how did it not make it into the study?
Wasn't reported at all, it flat, I had offered two point six million, it's not reported at all. It simply said, it is noted that SEWSA provided estimates for capital costs, but as of the date of the report, Hazen believes that the actual capital costs are higher due to current construction costs.
Okay, so that addressed, okay.
But it was a business term that SEWSA offered, and gave a rationale of how we came about it. We differ on how that rationale is.
It's just a big, big difference.
So, yes, correct.
But, hold on, my, to answer, let me finish.
Okay.
Alright, so to answer your question is that Teddy has been negotiating with Joint. All the time?
Based off of, based off of.
Right, but you've been doing this, you've been doing this for months now, right? So now you're saying that, and y'all presented, wait, and y'all presented us, council, with a final report from Joint that was done by this engineering group, correct?
Which was also our understanding as a group, as a, as a body, that that was a final report from Jason Phil, which brought a different view of his perception of it.
Right, because it wasn't, it wasn't.
And so the opportunity should now be afforded to Joint Municipal to do the same thing.
Why? Because, because, I mean, they can't, but, but I'm saying, they can't, but this is a second bite of apple for Joint, because the, the report, the report that was done by this engineering firm, right? Took into consideration the Joint Water offer, am I not correct about that?
Well, I, I.
Right?
Joint, neither side saw the other's numbers, so they each submitted what their best.
But these numbers never got into the report, they were not averaged.
No, well, then, then, no, I think this is a, this is, the study is the study, now, Joint Municipal should have a, they, they look at it too, and they may, ma'am, hold on. They may have, they need the opportunity to come back and say, you know what, we think it was bloated here, and here, and here, and we can cut here, and here, and here as well.
Well, that's fine.
So I think that's, that's where we are.
But I was town, but I was town manager, and I was so far there.
Well.
Didn't even bring it to our attention that that was even an option.
I, I, it was not an option to me.
Why?
It was an option, you, you made it an option.
Jason, this, this.
This email, wait, wait, this email is dated, the email that they sent. It's dated, wait, Lance, so let me.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Thanks, July third.
It's dated, July third, twenty nineteen, okay? Council never got these numbers, the numbers we got were from the engineering firm, where they were inflated, they were not true numbers. So now.
Well, we did an independent study, and that's why we made the consultants to be an independent study.
Okay, the independent study.
Did you, third party?
I'll independent.
Well, it's very independent, that's my understanding, we voted as a body to do it.
Lance, please don't talk over me.
I'm trying, hold on, one of them.
Have they done business with any of the principals before, prior to this study?
Yes. Prior to the study, they did some, uh, small stuff at Joint Municipal.
Yes, they did, yes, they did.
Does, does any member of the.
Pretty big company, would you say, Mr. Phil?
Does any member of the Hazen firm have.
Big company.
Relationships that will benefit from this?
No.
They not gonna do the work? Oh, Gilbert Summit does not stand to benefit from a staff club on the joint musical, uh, the joint line?
I would say that anyone that wants to develop in the area between Batesburg and Leesville, and the four lanes that's coming this way, any, any developer who wants to be there is gonna absolutely benefit from having water between Lexington and Batesburg Leesville, absolutely.
Who sells it? Who sells it? Who sells it off that line?
Well, we don't know, I mean, it depends on a different set of. And again, this is why I'm saying, why don't we have Joint do this work and present, just like Mr. Phil did to present?
Well, here's, here's the thing, Lance.
Because you already presented this.
Listen, here's the thing.
That's why.
I didn't.
Okay, here's the thing, listen, this is, this is, I'm having a real issue with you right now on this, because.
Fine.
Because this information was available to council a year ago, and it was not presented to council. Now, what was presented to council was a, a, a report.
Listen, I understand what you're saying, that this information was presented, but what we decided to do was to hire consultants, we would go and look at the options.
We agree with that.
Right, we agree with that, and so that's part of what we agreed to, that's part of that email.
Okay, but hold on, Lance, let me, you can spin this any kind of way you want, but let me try to say what I gotta say.
It's just a fact, sir, we, we've been looking for an unbiased study, and that's what we did, we've never done this stuff.
You should have brought both of them to council, that's why.
We were bringing the study to council, it's not, you know, and what Mr. Phil has said, is Mr. Phil said that this is not, that he's not represented well in this study, and I, and I, and I'm glad you're here, and so now we need to let Joint Municipal come and present, and apply themselves, don't you think, Mr. Phil, that they should have the opportunity to change anything they should change?
Thank you, dear brother. You're trying, you're trying to, you're trying to, to, uh, blow up something that's going to fall.
I'm not, really.
Can I finish, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Phil, please.
Go ahead, you're good.
Alright, so this report, these numbers were available to, uh, to the engineering firms and to our staff, and presumably to you. Now, this, the information that we actually received in that report did not reflect these numbers and this information that this gentleman has, um, has brought to council, what we did get was a full report from Joint Water that was reflected in, in the, um, in the Hazen report, okay? So now, what you're saying is that you want opportunity for Joint Water, because we were about to vote on this. We were about to vote on this at, at.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of Mr. Phil having issue.
Okay, let me finish, and that's a problem though, Lance, because you sit on Joint Water's board.
I don't sit on his board, is anyone from Batesburg Leesville sitting on your board, Mr. Phil?
How many people are on your board?
Do we have any representation?
Lance?
Would you have any representation?
We're not gonna go down the rabbit hole.
I'm just asking a question, Mr. Phil, do we have, does Batesburg Leesville have any representation in some panic, water to your authority?
Basically.
Hold up a number of people that represent.
Lance, I've been speaking to you about my, hold on, because he's going all around the question I'm asking him. The question I'm asking you is that the report we received was represented to council as a final report, because, wait. Because when we were doing first reading the budget, we were also asked to vote on a four hundred thousand dollar contract here to, to get these guys started on this project, okay? So that means that whatever we got from Joint Water was baked into that, uh, proposal, right? Yes, right, yes or no, just yes or no?
There was a piece of the engineering that we were gonna be voting on to get started, just like the two million dollars that was spent engineering to Saluda County, which then got blocked, because we couldn't bring a roll, roll on back.
Lance, I understand that, but what we got in the report from the engineers was a final say-so, the final from your board.
No, it's not from the board, it's, the board doesn't get into discussions on, on the potential, the consultants go and they meet with the gen, with the engineers, it looks like they did with, with Mr. Phil.
I stipulated.
And just like with Mr. Phil, Mr. Phil found things inside the report, that he wanted to say, look, this is, this doesn't represent what I want. So then I, I believe that Joint Municipal has, should have the same opportunity to come and speak.
I understand that.
I think we modified a little bit, Lance, I think I offered that, and it wasn't, there was a discrepancy in what I offered and what was presented in it.
I'm sorry.
And let me, and let me, let me say this though, Lance, because what we were prepared to vote on for the four hundred thousand dollars, and what Teddy's consistently saying, a dollar sixty-nine, came from Joint Water, correct?
And it, yes, just like the numbers that were in there in the study came from Mr. Phil, from our understanding.
Right, and those numbers, those numbers were not correct.
Okay, so.
And we were, we were prepared to put down, and four hundred thousand dollars were put down, even a hundred million dollars were put down. This information hadn't come forward, Lance, and that's a problem. So I don't have a problem letting Joint Water get a second bite of the apple. But I do, I do have an issue with the fact that if this had not come to light, we would have been four hundred thousand dollars down the road, and we would have committed to a thirty million dollar project where, when now, what, hold on, Lance?
Yeah.
Okay.
You've gone a long time, I just have these, go ahead, go ahead, keep going.
And let me speak, and then you can have the rest of the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay, because I don't know really finding out the humor in this.
No, it's not funny, Mr. Phil, but please, just go ahead, yeah.
Well, stop interrupting me. Okay, so, what I'm, what I'm saying is that we were headed in one direction that would have cost us thirty million plus, uh, four hundred thousand from engineering, if it wasn't for those, the kids that uncovered this, this information. So, now, what you're saying is, okay, so now we got real numbers. Now you wanna go back, wait, now you wanna go back to Joint Water, and so they can readjust their numbers, so if their numbers were real then, why aren't they real now? I don't have a problem with, with doing that, but all I wanna say is, and just for the record, and for the substance here, that, that is not right. What was about to happen to this, to this town with that contract is not right, you know it, you know this information was in here, I mentioned it to you, and, uh, in several council meetings before, that we had additional information in the town hall, and y'all act like I didn't know what I was talking about.
No, you're not, I thought you were talking about the rural laws that I.
He got it.
I thought you were talking about the rural laws that I.
No, 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 you know, I told you exactly what I was talking about.
No, you actually didn't, you said.
See, so listen, you talk over me, like I don't, like I don't exist. When I'm trying to tell you something, that's probably why you didn't understand what I was saying.
No, I'm listening.
I'm not going, I'm not going, we, we're not going anywhere.
If, if, if I may, real quick, I, I think what I'm hearing here is, is on a broad surface, what you offered to do was in there, where is the numbers that, that you feel are not correct? My question would be, were the same numbers and cost estimates the scale of the cost estimate used for both projects? And the answer is yes. So if we would like to go back, we could always go back and use his estimates for construction cost, and apply those same scale of estimates to the joint municipal project, and it should.
Mr. Phil, Mr. Phil.
I will say this, it is very, it is very unorthodox to have someone that, that you're potentially doing business with to scale cost estimates at the cost that they want the cost to be at, that is not common, that is never done. That is why you have an independent engineering firm provide the cost estimates, because they would be on the same scale.
Ted, Ted, listen, I got two things to say to you. First of all, you knew that these numbers were not right.
It, it, it's a dollar ninety-eight in the presentation that council received.
And I, and I spoke to you.
These numbers were in that presentation.
I'm just talking about recently, I brought this up to you, and you told me, get the judge to overturn the, um, the, the, the order. And I was trying to talk to him about, you told me.
Then we weren't on the same page in the conversation.
Yeah, so you was trying, you was trying to.
We weren't on the same page.
You was trying to blow passes.
No, I wasn't trying to blow passes, because those numbers were in the study, they were in the presentation.
Okay, so.
The difference is, he's saying that his cost estimates are less than what they're projecting.
Right.
But I will say for the sake of the study, both projects were put on the same scale.
Okay, so they, they were, they were not, but here's the point, and this is what council, really, listen, here's what council needs to understand now. We need to have an independent, um, engineering firm reevaluate this project with the numbers we have here today, and if Joint Water wants to come up with some new numbers, I'm fine with that. But the engineering firm that stands, that has done business with Joint Water, and who has, um, uh, maybe an interest, a conflict of interest at this point, because they did give us the wrong numbers, we need to have another engineering firm come back, and if Joint wants to do it, that's fine, so we can compare apples to apples with the true numbers. Let everybody, everybody want to get a second bite, fine, we need to have another engineering per, uh, um, firm come and take a look at this thing. Because right now, what we have is a situation where this project is a hell of a lot cheaper than what you are, and you sit on that board at Joint Water, so what the Joint Water is offering to town may very well increase these water bills forty dollars.
The county's scale would never allow that with a number of questions that you have.
But you don't have that in writing.
It's not gonna happen.
You don't have that in writing.
She's not gonna have, I, but Mr. Phil, I have my question. And, and I don't have anything in writing, of course, we don't make contracts, we're not negotiating a contract. Mr. Phil, how much are your water rates going to go up over the next three years?
We have proposed and agreed to, starting this past March, we rose them four percent. We're going to raise them four percent for the following two years. If you look at our rates in comparison to everybody else, we're ten dollars below the market for special purpose districts.
Ten dollars below, ten dollars per.
So for a, based off of four thousand dollars per customer, residential customer, we on average are ten dollars.
In Saluda County.
In Saluda County.
Four thousand gallons.
Four thousand gallons, one residential.
Not four thousand.
Okay, so my only question, hold on, sorry.
So when you, so you're talking about a modification of your plant to up to twelve, fifteen million gallons per day?
Okay, so there's step one is what we call high rating from four to six, which we're doing in our face to project. That requires that we increase the size of our pump at our raw water intake and at our water treatment plant, one each. We have everything else as far as filtration and everything else taken care of to be able to hydrate that, to have it permitted to be six. We have on the site itself, the ability, already plumbed out on an open space behind the existing plant, to go from six to either twelve or fifteen on that side.
So, what kind of changes would the users see as far as the cost?
That was a question I asked myself as, as well, because once we hit the six, I would look at a bigger jump potential. However, when you're talking about on the degree of scale, when you hit six million, even if we come back, we were able to do this project for the four million gallon plant with lines, raw water lines, raw water intake, for about twenty-two million. We could probably reasonably, even with escalated prices, be able to do it for twenty million in the future. With that assumption, our rates are going down, as we have more people tied into our system, our rates on a scale basis continue to go down. One of my good friends that I've learned a lot from is the Catawba Water Treatment Plant up near Rock Hill. They produce fifty-four million gallons, if not more. Their cost to produce is fifty-four cents per gallon. I'm never getting there, by the way, let me just say that, but we have the opportunity to benefit, and even if we make the jump to double in size or go a little bit bigger, it's not gonna impact your rates the way that we operate. Again, my grandmom said, waste not, want not, we try to do things as frugally and as efficiently as possible.
My, my last question to you is, what you presented to us today?
Is a lot to the door.
Well, it's not to the door, but will you memorialize that in writing to this group?
And I'll say this as well, before I came here, I was at my board meeting, we actually moved it up so that I could be here. My board ratified and allowed me to extend this year-old pu, uh, quote to be current to the day. We would like, obviously you needed some time, we are sitting waiting to do a water treatment. If y'all do decide to come with us, that'd be great. We'd like to move quickly, because we're ready to start building our face of water lines and love to have.
What is your setting for that water plant to be in service?
The water treatment plant's been in service since February.
You said you was gonna expand, when that expansion comes in, when is it gonna be in service?
Immediately, if once I switch out.
When?
When I go to bid and I.
How long's that gonna take, thirty, forty, sixty?
One year.
One year?
Yes, sir.
So one year from today, you will have enough capacity?
I have, frankly, I have enough capacity to serve you right now, sir.
You have enough capacity to serve us right now?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to carry debt service for us?
That's the whole settlement.
Okay, so we won't have to go anywhere anyway?
Well, no, 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 well, we can talk, that's all, what he's.
I, I was just trying to understand what was built into the debt service.
I was assuming as I did in the Hazen Sawyer study, that you were going to build up and cover the capital. We can talk about that as well. What, what I was gonna say is, part of, we, we receive over seven million dollars a grant. I have incorporated that and did not charge y'all for that. I want y'all to share in that blessing of getting a grant, that's part of our western Midlands region. That's why my debt service is relatively low for one point two million or two million in capacity.
So basically, council, we have a, a real deal wanting to take, in writing, in writing, ratified by his board, and ready to go.
Mr. King, Mr. King, ask a question.
Since this used to have about wanting to sell water to us, why wouldn't you have allowed us to just put our line through Saluda and have our own water?
It's a fair question, it's a hard discussion and takes a lot of time. All I can say is I'm sorry that there are hard feelings about that. We have this special purpose district, and we're very rural, as I like to say. Every customer I get is precious to me. And where you might think this is a very rural community, I think it's the densest part of my county.
I believe it was a raw water line that she's referring to, so why would you block a raw water?
Well, Nancy, first of all, no-
That, that Mr. Fell talked, Mr. King, speaking over the top of the floor. Mr. Fell, answer the question. You don't have a, you don't have an answer, Mr. King, Mr. Fell has a question, has to answer.
I'll have the answer, but Mr. King, go ahead.
Okay, so Nancy, you were not on council.
Yeah, I wa-, I was not.
Okay, so there were a lot of reasons why we didn't get raw water from Saluda County. And it was not Saluda County's fault that we did, that we did not-
Steve, go ahead, excuse me, would you yell?
Yes, sir.
I read, this is, this is the judge's ruling. In fact, the encroachment permit application shows a finished water line next to the road of oil lines, so applicant, appellate was apparently thinking that it would also install a finished water line along Lookout Point Road. The town manager did not deny that. App, uh, appellate had other options to obtain water, but chose to come to Saluda County instead. So basically, you know, I keep hearing, you can't trust, you can't trust. I looked the other way around and find out maybe other people have a reason not to trust us, based on past, past.
Mr. Fell, what's your, what's your interpretation, that question?
What he said isn't correct, that's what happened. Uh, what I would say is, we need to move forward, Lord knows we have food. All I can do is apologize for the past and try to move forward. I think what I'm offering here is a very favorable deal for the town, and I really, um, want to try to-
And that wasn't, that wasn't one person's fault, that was Batesburg and Saluda's fault. So it wasn't all on Saluda, that was Batesburg and Saluda's fault, that didn't happen.
And I've tried to do everything I can to try to repair-
They need to stop trying to put it on Saluda, 'cause it wasn't.
Okay, all right, basically everyone understands that regardless of who we go with, and whatever the initial price is, that any reasonable contract will have built into it a formula for increasing rates as cost increase, and that's gonna be uniform in virtually every contract. Well, I believe we have that with Rich Spring, is that not correct? We calculate our cost and therefore it changes, we just changed it from one ninety-three to one ninety-seven. Is that true, Mr. Luckard? So we have built in-
No, there's, there's numbers, sir. It's been dollar ninety-seven for about past forty years.
Okay, that just verifies that I can't trust information. One, an address to you, Mr. Shell, okay? You say we have representation on the board and the joint, all right? Now, you are one of eleven, all of whom are mayors, not all of whom are customers of the joint, is that correct?
Uh, you're partially right, and that's-
Partially, uh, how can I be-
Not all, not all of them are mayors, sir, and, uh, I think not all are customers-
Who's on the board that's not a mayor?
We're all, are, it's part of what's in the county, it's-
Who's on the board who's not a mayor?
You told Mr. King he couldn't be on the board, it's not like he's all mayor.
I just came from the website, I came from the website earlier today, there are eleven board members.
Right.
Voting board members.
I think that's, well, Mr. Gabriel, I believe is not a mayor.
All of them are-
And he represents an area, yeah, Mr. Gabriel on the, on joint is, represents an area rather than his town. Do you understand that?
Okay, so they have one who represents the commercial customer. Now then, you, when you vote on a rate increase or not a rate increase, you're voting on the increase that they will add to their cost, is that correct? They are a wholesaler, they do not produce a product.
Right, they are a wholesaler, and they, uh, there is, there is no rate increase in this year's budget for doing this.
Okay, all right, but there have been in the past.
I'm sure, and, and we would be, we wouldn't, we definitely wouldn't be the biggest customer, they have seventeen thousand already. So anything that they would do, we would not, we would not, we would not have to shoulder the full burden of any cost, or, or even a large percentage. And Mr. Fell, how, how big would Batesburg Leesville be on your system?
If you were able to serve both yourself and Rich Spring, you'd be the number two customer. And that's where I get into the accountability and the responsiveness to being able to be a good steward of the town, and being a service owner. So you'd be a big deal for us, and you'd be accountable. As I like to call it, it's the degrees of separation, there's one degree-
But we'd also bear more of the cost, correct?
Now, you'd be representative of everybody else, actually, you're gonna, a wholesale rate for you is extremely favorable as compared to non-governmental entities. So a retail customer pays more than a wholesale governmental entity. You're gonna be getting probably the best deal there is, or any other governmental entity out there that wants to buy water for us.
Just a quick question, would we own capacity in your water system, two million gallons per day?
You have distribution capacity of two million gallons a day. We are, we initially put in a wholesale agreement, um, to make it simpler, and that you would have up to sixteen hundred gallons a minute, which equates to two million gallons a day that we have to provide to you.
But we would own two million gallons per day for, oh, two, two billion?
So if it's a twenty or sixteen inch pipe, you would have access, and that pipe, two million gallons a day from my plant to the county line, or from my plant to the county line on three seventy-eight, from my plant to October. Again, that's the opportunity to do less with more, in my opinion. If you can save money on this side of getting access to water, you can develop your Lake Mer, you can develop your Highway Number One and reach all of those new subdivisions coming in there. In my instance, this is a, not a scarcity mentality, it's abundance mentality. If this whole region can prosper, not just S E W S A, not just Gilbert, but everybody throughout, we're all gonna be better for it. And that may be a speech, but it's what I honestly believe, and I want to try to help.
Mr. Mayor, one for the point. Who, who actually sets the price to joint for their product?
Who sets the price to joint for their product?
The initial cost, West Columbia.
Right, but it-
And, and they are a non-representative board, they are a government entity.
Joint, I believe, has fifty-two or fifty-three percent of that plan?
They own capacity, not derived, not derived, and to have any input on pricing prices.
I mean, as Mr. Fell just said,
All right, I'm just pointing out-
That gives you some weight in the negotiation when you're the biggest customer, correct?
How much access capacity does the joint have?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
You sit on the board.
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. King, I don't know all of them, I don't know all of them.
I'm just saying, you sit on the board-
I do, I do, but I can't say what, I can't say what the capacity is.
So, so, Lord, you choose, well, we don't, and that's okay.
That's all, thanks. Anybody else?
Again, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, it's an opportunity. Again, I've left some information here, I'll leave my margin book, if you wanna contact me, or if you wanna contact me.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When you presented your cost estimate to our consultants-
Yes, sir.
And they put it in a paper, and they sent it to us. You did not get a copy of that paper.
Yes, sir, my philosophy.
Okay, you did not get a copy of that paper. Is that what you said?
I was, I was setting, no, I-
I find that highly questionable. Ma'am?
He did.
Ma'am?
He just asked a question.
I'm asking a question.
Oh, and I, Mr. Bell, I have not.
You did not get concern.
Yes, I did, but it's not-
Well, who did you address your concern to?
This is it.
So you didn't know how, because we didn't get this information?
No, no, wait a minute now, back, 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 when he found out that the paper went on, and he was part of that paper, he did not get nothing from anybody at that time stating what was in that paper, and you did not read in the paper-
I read in the paper.
That council had three quotes that they were studying, and his didn't make it. At that time, a good manager would have asked somebody, what?
Well, a, a good man- Excuse me, so your question is managerial ability?
That's what I'm-
I have to tell the time, I have this council, so if we just let Mr. Gabriel there?
I want to know why he did not go further and question us as to why we did not-
Well, hold on, like, uh, hold on, hold on, I'm trying, I'm trying to get you outraged. Now-
He ain't gonna do it.
Okay, you mad at him because, because he didn't raise hell?
Sure, I'm asking the question.
But you not mad at Teddy, because he had the information, he didn't give it to council?
We already said, we already established the limitations of the state.
But you not mad at that man?
That's not true.
Not those numbers.
Okay, is that what you said?
Those numbers are not there.
That's right.
You can dismiss me if you have, but I, I-
Council received an executive session presentation, and there was further discussion in executive session about the information that was in this study, and it was not released to anyone outside of this study, until after the vote had been taken, so that is not only-
Jesus.
Okay, all right, it's on him, but it's on him.
Is there anything else?
You mad, you seriously mad?
I struggle with what to do about that.
Man, I finished, sir, I know interrupted you when you're building with the lady.
I apologize, I apologize.
Man, I, I, I don't, when y'all make a statement, do I come back and say, are you doing? Then why don't you give me the same courtesy I give you?
Man, uh, oh, I just said, I apologize. Man, I apologize.
Now, give my feet. What was your reason, or your thinking, and your motive, that we did what happened?
Hold on a second, I apologize.
Hold on, I'll be back. I'm the vice chairman of the board in Saluda. You're not gonna be our manager, we're not even- We're a question, we're just a question, we're just asking a question, sir. Have a great day. Okay?
Thank you, Teddy. Thank y'all so much, I, again, we wanted to try to-
Thank you, sir. Anything else to add to the motion to adjourn?
No, sir, I called this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, something else, Mr. Hall?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay, I have concerns about the no bid contract for four hundred thousand dollars, is that not in contrary to our ordinances?
Mr. Luckard, professional services is not required to buy ordinance to be bid.
Is that my good business practice?
That's, council, that was, that was part of the discussion in executive session.
So, at, at this point, in the crisis, in the middle of the nine crisis meetings that we had, I can't say anything about what went on in there.
And I can't be held responsible for the vote of council either.
I am, no, no, wait, 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 you call council members twenty-four seven and twist arm about listening to you and not listening to the facts? You do that, you call-
Mr. King, you did, sir.
I do not call council people.
Hall, do you have anything else?
And I'm, and I'm a council, oh, well, I'm a council member, and I can call council people, but we don't want to have the manager, we importantly-
It's the manager's job to go negotiate things with the county town, it's a council manager for negotiation. Mr. Hall has something else to present, now, I think you and Teddy can take this to-
No, no, we're not gonna take it anywhere, but I'm gonna tell you, it's the manager's job to give us a report that over a year old, that's relevant to what-
There, we, we've heard that, I wanna hear what else Mr. Hall has, okay?
All right, I have my concerns about a no bid contract of that magnitude.
Okay.
All right, uh, I think that we should be transparent to our taxpayers and to our, the people who actually we work for.
Okay.
I give salaries, and I try to earn that salary by working for those people. We have a third player in this, that is called Rich Spring. And I believe that all the numbers in the report are predicated on us retaining that contract. Not only that, but I also find that in the report, when we start talking about discrepancies, when they did the joint pricing over the term of the contract, in which we would determine what our cost per thousand gallons would be. For some reason, when they did joint, they used approximately seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand gallon units. But when they did the same for Saluda County Water and Sewer, they did seven thou-, seven hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and six, with no viable explanation as to why it was done. It made a significant difference, all right, in our cost, basically, I'm down-
It's a question for the, I think it's a question for the consultants, Mr. Hall.
Well, I mean, now we, now we question-
I mean, I don't know who else there is gonna answer your question, but I hear your question, I think it's absolutely valid question, we should, we should present that to the consultant.
This is the opportunity that consulting reports is important.
With council package, there is a sheet with red printing on it. I don't want to divulge information that may be contrary to what's going forth in the contract. But it's quite readily easy to see that if we do not retain that contract, our cost is going to be significantly greater. We're talking about fifty cents per thousand gallons if we do not retain them, and there is only one way to retain them, because once they get these numbers, their contract says they can walk. I have one question for, uh, Mr. Shepard, he is here. Mr. Shepard, there's a, uh, about fifteen thousand dollar difference between the main, the maintenance and operating cost for the booster pump, uh, when it's maintained, maintained, uh, built into the joint system, and when it's built into this system, uh, they say it's gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars more to maintain. Is there a significant difference in what the two booster pumps would have been?
I'm not familiar with exactly what you're talking about, I don't think so, because we got the booster pump station with the same size.
Well, the joint, they quoted ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. For Saluda County Water and Sewer, they quoted a hundred and seven thousand, seventy-two dollars on an annual maintenance for the booster pump, okay? Am I, well, that's what I'm asking, uh, are we talking-
Different size can be different.
Are we talking apples and apples, or are we talking apples and oranges? The last one, I do believe that under the joint proposal, we're going to retreat the water at two separate indivi-, individ-, in, edibles, all right? Sometimes I get upset.
There's a possibility we may have to add some more disinfectant.
In two separate locations?
Maybe the same with Saluda County, I don't think they'd use ammonia, a peramination. We can raminate our water, a little bit of ammonia which helps with our removal. So depending on what that disinfection-
Sorry, actually, it has something to do with the annual water.
Yes.
Actually, because it's traveling twenty-six miles, it gets older by the time it gets here, et cetera, and, okay, all right. And- Okay. Debt service. Well, I guess. I believe that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, all of that, the motion to adjourn.
So good.
Motion by Mr. Prosser, by Ms. Edbridge. District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
District five.
Yes.
District six.
Yes.
District seven. District eight. Ms. Bob, district eight?
Yes.
And I go, yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.